Please rise the sweet flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Mr. Basil, would you do a roll call, please? Sure thing. Mr. Basil, present. Mrs. Bytes?
Present.
Mr. Doty?
Present.
Mr. Kurtz?
Here.
Mr. Rathke?
Here.
Mr. Speed?
Present.
Ms. Karowski?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Mr. Martino?
Here.
Item four under announcements, there will be an executive session following this meeting to discuss a personnel matter. Mrs. Torscha?
I don't have anything extra to report this evening. I just would like to thank you all for a great year and looking forward to the start of the new one. So, thank you.
Thank you. Under agenda edits, I've been handed one edit and that's that under item 12, personnel approvals, letter B, 1B. The wording should read Tracy C. Schultz, 4th grade teacher, Amity Elementary Center, FMLA, beginning September 2nd, 2014, followed by an unpaid leave of absence ending approximately January 2nd, 2015. Are there any other agenda edits?
Just wanted to make note that the minutes that I've sent out to the rest of the board, I've made some edits to those. Just wanted to make sure everybody wasn't aware of those. If we're approving minutes tonight, that would be the version I would hopefully approve of.
Did everybody get a copy of Mr. Basil's edits to the minute?
Yes.
Procedures for public participation are in the inside of the blue cover to the agenda. Are there any presentations by the public on any agenda items?
Very tough to hear your comments. This is my vote, so I don't think you're on it. But I hear you out here. Please all give your likes and clear your ears. HCC volunteers, Alexx volunteers, are they in fact doing labor, related labor jobs if somebody has been laid off for less than their hours?
No. They are truly volunteers that are coming in and assisting in the classrooms.
Or doing jobs that had been done by people who had been laid off for less than their hours?
No.
Why do I think they're not doing it? I asked seven times. Of course, oh, I know why. I know why. Because I asked two volunteers and they said, "We're basically doing AIDS jobs." Now, what are they doing? Just what are these people doing running around the school if they're not doing AIDS jobs or something like this? For example, what are they doing? They stop.
They're volunteering their time in the classrooms.
I guess so. They are actually doing what an AIDS would have done in the classroom.
We didn't have AIDS in every single classroom.
But they weren't doing an AIDS job?
No, they shouldn't be doing an AIDS job. They should be coming in for a brief amount of time. They shouldn't be there for seven and a half hours. They shouldn't be there for five and a half hours. They should be coming in and volunteering within their child's classroom.
Well, I think, because I've had somebody told me they're basically doing an AIDS job. So, let's go over here to the 83. 11E and 8E. Is that some taxation for capital tax filed off and also a part of the tax?
Mr. Temple, if I'm not mistaken, this has been this way for several years. It's not something new we enacted this year.
So, if you're not putting them in the white, why is it just being stated? I thought it was something you were adding, adding ones with deep love.
No, we haven't added any new taxes this year whatsoever.
The one tax is pursuant to the Act of 1998, the Local Tax Enabling Act, and the other tax is pursuant to a school code. They are two separate taxes.
My name is Kathy McNeely and I live at 3034 Shoot Your Eyes Douglasville. I am a graduate of Daniel Boone and both my children graduated from Daniel Boone. I am a taxpayer who struggles to make ends meet like many others. Yet even with my financial situation, I implore you to reconsider your idea of not raising our taxes. Rather than not raise our taxes at all, please consider raising them even a small percentage, possibly 1%. This will be beneficial to the taxpayers in the future because it should save us from having a substantial debt and a large increase in the future. It may also help us restore some of the aspects of quality education which are currently lacking or suffering. Having lived in this school district all but two years of my life, I have seen many changes to the community. As a homeowner, it's discouraging to me that the values of our homes have dropped so drastically. Yes, some of that was economy-related. However, many local areas are recuperating at a faster rate than we are. I think there is a direct relationship to the value of our homes and the quality of our educational programs. I never thought I would see the day when families will not purchase homes in this school district because of the negative publicity that Daniel Boone has received and because of the alterations to the structure of our educational system. Speaking of our educational system, as an alumnus and a parent of alumni, I am deeply concerned with the choices made in recent years. In my opinion, my children receive an extensive quality of education at Daniel Boone. It prepares them for the successful careers that they have today. My son works in an art, as a art director in the Philadelphia area. His passion for art began in his elementary art classes and grew each year from his exposure to those classes. Those classes were, on average, 45 minutes. He was dumbfounded when I told him that there was a possibility of that being changed to 20 minutes. My children were both intrigued by playing instruments in 4th grade and their love of music grew from there. Both were active in the marching band and other band units, too. At that time, high school band was an elective course for which credit is earned. Band taught both my children life lessons and skills they could not have obtained in a classroom, and that starts at the elementary level as their first stepping step. My daughter has a PhD in concert and her well-rounded experiences in both elementary and high school were the first steps in pointing her toward her success. I was privileged recently to read the AUC 5th grade recognition for this year, and one girl stated, and I quote, and she's referring to her 4th grade year, "That year, by joining chorus and band, I decided to play the flute." That officially marked that it was the best year of my life. I could say that my children are finishing school, so what do I care? Well, this is about my future, your future, the community's future, and way beyond us. School is a time of learning and it's also a time of creating passion in children to grow and to be artists, musicians, mathematicians, doctors, lawyers, et cetera. Without an excellent, well-rounded educational program, how do you expect us to live in an excellent world? I think Whitney Houston says it perfectly in her song, "Brave is love of all." The children are our future, all of us. Thank you for your time. My son was unable to be here tonight. He did spend his sentence and you should have a copy of those. Thank you.
Seeing another public comment, we'll move on to recognition for June.
She wants another edit that she wants to have written in, the numbers for the coaches' salaries. As the ones that are on the side or just the ones that are on here?
I've just been handed one more agenda edit. For the coaches' salaries, one of the attachments to the agenda, the fall middle school salaries are $21,527.50. The spring salaries are $49,813. And the new total is $167,478.50. Thank you. And now we'll move on to recognition for June.
Well, at this time, I would like to recognize Vaughn Thren for his Boy Scout rank of Eagle Scout on this achievement. Unfortunately, Vaughn cannot be with us this evening to accept this recognition. He had to work. But I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention that Vaughn Thren had earned his Eagle Scout, which is a great accomplishment. So, congratulations to the all. Next, I would like to mention the BCTC students. Each quarter, BCTC instructors select a student from their program whose attitude, skills, and knowledge gained during their particular quarter is above and beyond the standard. The student shows initiative and integrity in performing these tasks and is overall the best student for the quarter. These students are from the 4th quarter and are as followed. So, if you are here and present, please come up. Leah Idson, Painting and Decorating. Alyssa Basilico for Pal. Alyssa? All right, we'll go down, Alyssa.
Congratulations. The Goodyear Holden Garden Tree. Paul Miller, Paul Hanner. Jay Wilson, Paul E. Har Harverak for Reserve Auctions. I know I'm not necessarily going to be here, but we can get into this. Definitely providing that. Congratulations to all.
We have to close this.
Moving on to the consent agenda.
The consent agenda tonight encompasses item 8A through 8EE. So, if the board would like to take a moment to review all these before we have a vote, let me know if there's any questions or comments.
Letter U, the Hostel Wellness Foundation grant, and we're getting $70,000. Is there a detail that we're on website?
I sent it to, I sent it out later this afternoon. The person responsible for the grant was on vacation and did not get back in until today.
Would the public ever access to that?
Once it's approved, we certainly can. We don't typically put the grants out there because it's an electronic version. It's not like an agreement, your contract. It's the whole process that you're applying for. It's difficult to read, but you know, it's certainly something that they can look at.
No, I guess, I just thought that when you get the grant, you get a cover page with it and it says, you know, it's kind of like a framework of what we're receiving and that. And I just thought it would be good for the community to be aware of what generosity.
We can certainly summarize that. That's not a problem.
Okay, great.
Sure.
Other board member questions or comments? Is there a motion to?
So, move.
Move by Ms. Rudowski, second.
As amended, sorry, submit to prove as amended.
Mr. Wolf, second.
Mr. Basil?
Yep. This will be an as roll call vote unless I hear votes to the contrary. Hearing none, motion passes. Moving on to presentations by board members. Mr. Basil, any secretary's correspondence? Nope. Is there a Berks County intermediate unit report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Martino. I had my final BCIU board meeting last month. It was a routine meeting with routine approvals and the recognition of some retiring employees. I was unable to attend the meeting this month, and I told the BCIU about that in advance. Next month, I will be, well, the reins will be handed over to Mr. Rathke. I wish him the best of luck in his new role. I don't believe the BCIU meets in July, so he could resume in August. And I believe that orientation program has begun. But as always, I will forward out the minutes from the meeting when I receive them, which should be shortly. But again, I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to serve on the BCIU for the past three years. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtz. Is there a Berks Career and Technology report?
BCTC Board actually meets for June on Wednesday, but just a couple of highlights from the May meeting. The May meeting is an awards ceremony, and you know, we had some students of the quarter here that Mrs. Torscha recognized. But there's probably about a 45-minute to an hour time period of student recognition for students, not just from Daniel Boone, but all over the county, that have won first, second, third place in national competition, or state competitions and going on to nationals. And it's just really, it's really a neat thing to see how great of a job our students do and the opportunities they have at the VOTEC school. And you know, I've talked to other teachers at other VOTEC schools and they just don't seem to have the programs that are available to our students. So, I think that's great. The other thing is every, every two years, the construction classes build a student house, and they actually build it from the ground up. And so, they finished the house this year and it is going to be, it is available for, it'll go to auction, I believe, in August. And it gets featured in the Reading Parade of Homes and they have open houses. But that's also a really neat thing to see. We always tour that, I think, in April, the year before it goes on the market. And it's, they do beautiful work. It's a really neat thing. So, just two, those couple of things. And I did speak with Ms. Dr. Lee, and he did say they'd be happy to host us, you know, a meeting. I would suggest we wait till fall at this point because then you can enjoy the culinary arts. But they'd be happy to have us up, give us a tour, and we could hold a meeting there. They'd provide dinner. So, we could do that in the fall.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Rudowski.
I have a question for you, Mr. Rudowski.
Sure.
Is the house, would it be worth a trip out to the website to see, are there pictures of that house available or video of anything?
I believe there are on the, on the BCTC website. If, if not, I can, I can definitely, I can, I'll look for a link and see if I can email that out to you. Sure.
If it's listed with a real estate agent, maybe do something.
I don't know that they actually list it because they do auction it. They, they go for, and we don't, we have not set the lowest price at this point, but we'll be doing that tomorrow. But I'm not sure that there's a real or hand on it, but I'll see what I can find out. Okay?
Ms. Karowski, is there an update on the business model for the driver's training?
No, I did send an email to the business manager, but I haven't heard back, so I'm going to follow up with him on that on Wednesday. Sure.
Under the legislative report, there are a couple of things. The, there has been no movement whatsoever on House Bill, Senate Bill 76, the Property Tax Elimination Act. In fact, with the primary passed, the bill has just sort of dropped out of sight. Whether that'll be resurrected or not is anybody's guess. The legislature right now is focused on the budget, the state budget for 2014-15. Right now, they're looking at possibly a billion-dollar deficit. So, Governor Corbett has already said that he does not anticipate a budget being finalized by June 30th. So, we're looking at moving into July before we have any idea about a state budget. Locally, I was able to talk to the Amity Township manager, and Mrs. Torscha and I will be meeting with him and the president of the Board of Supervisors and possibly some other local municipality representatives soon, just to try and get together to discuss the interaction of the local community and the school. So, that's it for legislative report. Any, any questions?
Are there any other reports? We had a finance committee meeting where we discussed the budget, and I think one of the largest variables going forward in terms of multi-year budget that Mr. Small was able to put together for us was making a determination based on enrollment when we would probably have to close another building. It was estimated that if we lost another 200 students, that might be feasible, and that may have a significant impact on our budget going forward. And as far as I know, Mr. Small was not able to put together a, a number as of yet for specific, for all the different buildings. He was going to take snapshots of each building, determine what the cost was on an annual basis to have that particular building open, so we could take a look and just see, okay, if enrollment dropped to X number of students, would that, would that justify the closure of a second building in the school district and what would the savings be going forward? I think our initial analysis was that the rate that we're losing students in terms of the overall enrollment, enrollment continues to decline by about 100 students a year. It was mentioned at the meeting, another 200 students, which would put us at the 16, 17 school year. We might be possibly looking at the closure of another building. But that's all theoretical until the time comes. But in the interim, I think Mr. Small is going to continue to work on those numbers to try to deliver to us a, a good estimate as to what those costs would be per building.
And the reserve study that we approved, that'll have a major impact in determining cost of each building, yes?
I think it'll, it'll have a major impact on what we know to be our capital requirements going forward in terms of, do we need roofs? Do we need sidewalks? Lighting, that sort of thing. Quite frankly, it's going to have a, an impact on budgeting to determine what it is we should be setting aside on an annual basis to meet those obligations.
Okay, thank you. Other comments or questions? Are there any other reports? Seeing none, voting in grounds, there's no report?
The boilers have been cut in half and have been removed, and that project is moving right along.
Thank you, Mrs. Torscha. Item 11, financial approvals.
That was at Berks County. Right.
Yes.
You wouldn't want the wrong building dissected.
No.
Let me just, thank you.
Item 11, financial approvals. Any comments or questions about the financial approvals?
Motion to approve, let it A through D.
So, move. Motion by Mr. Basil, second by Mr. Doty. Motion by Mr. Basil for item 11A through D, and second by Mr. Doty.
There's an E, I think.
Any comments or questions?
Specifically left E off.
Okay.
Budget by itself.
No comments or questions? Mr. Basil? Okay, so this will be an as roll call vote unless I hear votes to the contrary. Hearing none, motion approved. Item 11E, the 2014-15 district budget. I'll make a motion for 11E. Is there a second? Motion by Mr. Basil to approve item 11E, second by Mr. Speed. Comments or questions?
Well, we just, I don't know if everyone had a chance to look at the five-year study that was sent out today. I was hoping to have it last week, so if you have a little time to really study it. We go forward with a no-tax increase budget as we have proposed right now. At the expenditures that we're looking at, with state funding coming in, we're not expecting any more state funding. We're going to be in 15, 16 school year, basically without funding. And what I'm concerned is, and I know we've had some people write to the board and express opinions in, in either way, but we need to make sure we're doing our fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers. And I think, you know, some of the people that wrote in, you know, it's like, what are we willing to, what are we willing to give up? What are we willing to sacrifice going forward? And I can look at this budget and I can see that, you know, we're not going to, with the increases in the PIs that are coming, we're not, we're going to be cutting. The word drastic is going to be used next year, either drastic budget cuts for programs or drastic tax increases, or both. So, I'm not sure I can, I can support this budget now that it's been proposed. Now, maybe, and then we're not, I'm not on that, but I just wanted to, wanted to say that.
I, I tend to agree with Mr. Wolf, and I think I've kind of said that before. I'm a little concerned about, about the domino effect in the future and pension issue. And I know we've gotten emails and heard from people who don't want us to raise taxes, and I've heard from just as many people that, if not more, that, that are willing to pay an increase in taxes. And I know they could send it in or they could pay it for their neighbor or, in fact, just on my way here, I was talking to somebody who said, "Well, hey, just so you know, I'd be willing to pay a little more to continue, to ensure that we have programs for our children." And so, I, I do tend to agree with Mr. Wolf.
What I don't want to have, I don't want to have a discussion of, are we keeping kindergarten again next year? I mean, I don't have a child in kindergarten, obviously, but, you know, nothing could be worse for me than, as a parent of a student like that, to not even know if I have the ability to enroll my child in school. Because from what I understand, you know, from the back of the conception, some of the other private schools in the district, they're filled up. And I think they're filled up with our students that used to come here full-time. And I think they're filled up with our students that used to come here full-time. I understand, you know, a lot of the money was thrown out there in the stimulus, and when that money went away, nothing replaced it, so, you know, hard choices had to be made. My kids had a really good education, and they went through half-day. I think half-day is sufficient, in my opinion. Other people may have a different opinion, but not to have any, and, you know, that's a steep price to pay for money from an educational. I do want to thank Mr. Small and his team for putting together that five-year budget, because I know that new to the district, and I think you guys really put your nose to the front, stood there and got everything accomplished. I do want to thank you for doing that. And, I mean, I think it's, you know, obviously, I think everybody knows, I concur with what's been said so far by Mr. Wolf and Mr. Kradowski, that if you look at those numbers, now, you can hope there's a pension reform possibility, but that might only be for the future, it might not be for present. We're expecting, we're hoping, to get $600,000 in a block grant. We have no clue, and we have no clue when this budget might get passed by the state. So, I mean, I'm at the point now where I'm uncomfortable cutting any more programs. So if we don't raise taxes this year, next year, that's where the money will be, unless something drastically changes from the state. So, and, you know, I know that this has been said by, you know, and I want to emphasize and thank Mr. Basil, because he was very adamant about getting five-year plans. And I think in the past, we haven't been, I think decisions were made, but we count those numbers being in front of us, and maybe even the wrong decisions were made. Well, now we have them, and I hope we make the right decision. And, you know, I don't see taxes going up an immense percentage in the next coming years. If we could do smaller increases, I think that helps keep people budget perfectly for their needs, instead of getting a huge increase in any given year. Well, I think, you know, the reason why in the last two years, I felt pretty comfortable about now raising taxes is, quite frankly, we were pushing a budget surplus in a, you know, far in excess of any taxes we would have raised during that time. But we have, I think, with Mr. Small and the gentleman that was here to cover him, I think they've got, you know, wrung out a lot of the duplication of maybe some efforts or some other funds that were being held and reserved for contingencies. You know, I think what our, I think what our surplus projected was like 360 was around the neighborhood this year, something like that? Basically half, roughly half the 700 that we've been pushing the last couple of years. So we're moving in the right direction as far as getting a handle of what our costs are, knowing with a fair degree of certainty, hey, this is what we think our expenses are, are going to be our expenses. So, you know, with only pushing half that amount as a surplus this year, I think we've done a really good job of bringing some of those costs out, to the extent you can't let's 300-some thousand of a $53 million budget diminishes.
Well, I'd just like to throw out, in conjunction with that, I mean, we haven't, and we've talked about it multiple times, we haven't been putting anything towards capital projects. We are doing the reserve study. I'm sure that's going to be an eye-opener experience as to what we need to start putting aside for capital projects. And if we don't raise taxes at all, and we use the majority of the surplus, it's going to put us further behind the equal.
Let me surprise you will disagree. If you look at the numbers, because I did spend the afternoon looking at the numbers, Mr. Small did a projection for the five-year plan with no tax increase any year from now moving forward. So what you're looking at when you're saying we're going to run out of fund balance in two years is not really correct, because you have the option next year of raising taxes by the index and the exceptions, which would raise a million dollars, which would put your fund balance next year at close to $2 million, not $900,000. The following year, that million dollars we raised doesn't go away. So you've got that million dollars plus the potential to raise another million dollars with the index and the exceptions, which puts that surplus at close to $2 million. The third year, you've got the million dollars from the first two years, the million dollars from the second year, and the ability to raise taxes again, the index and the exceptions, which will put that fund balance at close to $2 million. And moving that into the fourth year, your fund balance would be close to $3 million. What I'm saying is, you have the ability to raise taxes sufficiently in the next four years, if need be, to keep your fund balance at $2 million or higher, not zero, without cutting programs, without cutting kindergarten. So I ask you then, why would we raise taxes this year? Because we might have to in the next couple of years, when there is sufficient room to raise taxes the next four years to cover our costs and our programs.
So what I would say is that, now, you might disagree, but on the spreadsheet that Mr. Small prepared, there are zero increases going out for those five years for our teachers' debt. So if you're expecting, I think, a zero increase for five years, we do, but I would expect that there is some increase down the road with Mr. Small, but I would think there would have to be some increase with the teachers' debt.
You're right, I might disagree with you.
Okay, and what if, who's to say that the index or the natural reality increase is where we need to be, whether it is?
It wasn't this year. We sat here and said that. We couldn't raise taxes enough to meet our contractual obligations and save all our programs. So what's to say it will be in the future?
But we did that this year. We met our contractual obligations, and we didn't eliminate any programs without raising taxes. So we did do that.
Because you used your fund balance. But if you don't have the fund balance to use, then what are you going to use to balance it?
But I just said, if we raise taxes, we will have the fund balance.
Yeah, I mean, I'm torn on this issue, just because, you know, as I've sat here for a number of years, and we've raised taxes when we didn't need to. And we've thrown surpluses, and we've underestimated our revenues or overestimated our expenses, and our fund balance has gone up from one year to the next. And, you know, I feel like we have an obligation to spend that money as opposed to taxing people out of their homes. And I think taxes have a huge impact on our ability to draw businesses to the area, they have a huge impact on our ability to, for people to have their equity appreciating their homes. And I think that has a negative impact on the overall community when we continue to raise taxes. And I'm, if we're going to get to whatever the number is going to be in four or five years, you can get there in gradual increases, or you can get there in larger steps. And I think that we haven't taken into consideration this issue of a declining enrollment, and how that's going to impact our budget going forward. As our enrollment continues to decline, there is an opportunity to realize some significant savings, which would have an impact on our capital requirements going forward. And I think that the issue of the programs that we are most concerned to get, the kindergarten, sports, and those types of things, those are built into this model going out five years. And as it relates to salary increases, you pay people what you can afford to pay them. I don't think you sign contracts that you can't afford, which is what put us into this position in the first place. So boards going forward, I hope they have the fortitude to say no when it comes to that type of pressure, that you don't sign a contract that you can't model out and pay for at the end of the day. And, you know, my, I guess I'm subscribing to the thought that I would prefer to wait and see what tomorrow brings, because you do have an opportunity to raise taxes to the point where you can meet the requirements of this $2 million working capital that everybody wants to target going forward. And it's certainly within reach, and quite frankly, you could spend that down even lower if you had to. Mr. Small, what did you say that you thought the cost of closing a particular building at NBC might be?
Right now, overall operating costs, just salaries, perks, supplies, and all of your maintenance items, roughly 3.5.
You wouldn't be getting rid of all that stuff.
No, you wouldn't be getting rid of all of it, but...
That's the actual question right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think when we were looking at the closure of BEC, it was just going to be about $800,000 a year in savings.
And the APC was $600,000, so you're looking at...
In year one.
In year one, so you're looking at six or up, if it came to that.
I like the budget. I haven't heard a compelling reason to raise taxes. All I have is that even if the salaries are flat, the total compensation package does not increase as much. Here we get the healthcare returns, which is true, but it will be received. The total compensation package does increase, so they won't be taking care of it.
Other comments, questions?
The numbers that are increased are the cost of healthcare to us and the pension that the state's making us pay. So it's not a compensation to the individual.
It's part of the total compensation package. So if you won't be cutting your healthcare or your healthcare costs increases, which means they don't still pay significant portion, as opposed to passing it on to them.
They do, they do, I agree. But I just don't, you know, I don't see that.
Other than if there was an idea, see, they're providing for their healthcare and salaries.
And actually, if you look at the healthcare and the cost going up, their total compensation moves down because they pay a percentage of healthcare. So our cost goes up there, goes up as well.
Well, this is the part of the cost that we're not paying for, that's in the five-year projection.
I think overall compensation, though, when you look at it over the last five years, it's almost triple CPI. And, you know, I think our, if you look at total compensation overall, people are well compensated in the school district as part of that collective bargaining agreement. The average compensation moves since I've been here from $55,000 a year to over $105,000 a year in six years. I mean, that's a significant increase in overall compensation. And you see that in our budget, because our budget moves $2.6 million a year to cover that.
And I'm not disagreeing that our teachers are well compensated. I just think it's unrealistic to look at a five-year projection and expect there to be no salary increases whatsoever.
Well, I think in the Cheminy School District, it...
Yeah, I mean, the whole thing with the budget, and I'm glad we have a five-year plan. I'm glad we've got some kind of structure moving forward. But a lot of it's conjecture. We don't know what the state's going to do. We don't know what's going to happen locally. We don't know, are we going to get a corporate business park on Limekill? We have no idea. So we can only project on the numbers that we have in front of us, which I think, going forward with a tax increase in coming years, if need be, I think we're safe. Is there anyone who hasn't weighed in? Mr. Doty, Mr. Kurtz, Mr. Speed?
I have said from the beginning of campaigning, the number of people that just in there are procreating taxes. And I told voters that I would, I would not vote to raise their taxes, and I intend to keep that promise tonight. I understand that things are going to be difficult moving forward, but like Mr. Martino said, the option remains in future years if we can take of it. That's just how I'm approaching this issue. All of these votes, we do think about, and I have thought about this vote, but that, those are my thoughts.
Mr. Speed, you started to say something?
Yes, I am committed not to raise taxes for this particular budget period.
Mr. Doty?
I think if we can hold off, then that's a good thing, if we can avoid raising taxes. And I think it's important that we're responsible, we act responsibly here, and not soak the taxpayers here. And in the future, if we need to, then by all means. But it sounds to me like the majority of people on this board want to pass this budget tonight, so should we bring it to a vote?
If there's no other comments or questions? I believe there was a motion, correct?
Yeah, there's a motion.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Basil?
Mr. Doty?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Rathgib?
No.
Mr. Speed?
Yes.
Mr. Kradowski?
No.
Mr. Wolf?
No.
Mr. Basil, yes? Mrs. Bytes?
Yes.
Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-3.
Is there a motion to approve the personnel action?
I make the motion to approve 12A through D as amended.
A through what, Ms. Kradowski?
A through D as amended.
As amended.
Oh, as amended, I'm sorry. I always forget to amend.
I'll second. Motion by Ms. Kradowski as amended, seconded by Mr. Basil. Comments or questions? I had a discussion with Mrs. Torsia the other day, and I asked her if she would to explain Mr. Isselman, because she interviewed, and I was, she told me, but I'd like her to address the board and the public as to Mr. Isselman's qualifications to be promoted to be assistant principal.
About a week ago, two weeks ago, we started the process to interview for that position. The first level was through administration, and then the administration recommended to the next committee two candidates to move on. Those, that committee consisted of two parents, two teachers, and four administrators. And at the end of the interview, Mr. Isselman had some qualifications that he had gotten prior to coming to the Danny Boone School District as, working as a, in a position with Albright College under their alumni program and in their recruiting area, that just gave him a little bit more experience in working with the public in a position like a principal's position.
Thank you. I just wanted them to hear what you had told me.
Sure.
What was his position?
He was working, he first started with our school district as an elementary teacher, and then was recently moved or reassigned to the high school as a high school English teacher.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Basil?
Should we wait for Mr. Doty to come back? Okay, this will be an asked, roll call vote unless I hear votes to the contrary. Hearing none, motion passes.
Item 13, motion to approve the program approvals. Moved by Mr. Wolf.
Second.
Second by Ms. Kradowski. Comments, questions?
Detention six.
What don't you have?
Detention six.
It's the last day of school.
Might have.
It's just information.
It was good?
Can I get the enrollment for the school, uh, for the rock on this too?
No, that's just our... That's just the Danny Boonary School District enrollment. And typically, on, um, another sheet that was designed by our past assistant business manager, listed all of our non-public attendees. So we can certainly have, um, Mr. Miller begin that for the start of the new school year.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Basil?
This will be an asked, roll call vote unless I hear votes to the contrary. Hearing none, motion passes.
Is there anything under policy, transportation, or old business?
Well, under policy, I am going to have to bring to the board, uh, policy, because we, the policy committee did not meet. But we do need to bring a policy forward for audio taping being allowed on the buses before the buses can begin to implement that. And they would like to start it at the beginning of the school year. I left them know that we would, um, that they would have to wait, obviously, because there would have to be two readings of that policy before it could be adopted. So I am going to try, I, the, the policy's pretty simple. I was on PSBA. I looked at what the intermediate unit had adopted. It's a relatively new policy. It would not incur any cost to the district. The wiring is already in place on the buses. That is something that, um, monetarily, the bus companies do incur. So it's just a matter of connecting the wires once the policy is presented, um, reviewed, and voted on.
Has anyone actually ever heard an audio recording from school bus?
I have.
Okay. From firsthand experience, if you put a microphone in front of the bus where the, with the camera facing fifty feet to the back, which is basically a large tin can rolling down the road, is, is, do we have that much trouble on the buses that, that we need to have our tractor partners incur that cost, which we will incur extensively?
They're telling me there's not a, a cost. It's, it's already there. It's already in place. The wires are not connected.
All right, but there is installation cost.
No, everything's there. They could, they could turn, they could turn it on at any time. It, by law, they can't. So until they get the okay for it to be adopted, for them to turn the switch, is my understanding, is, is all that they're waiting for.
Okay, but my, as an acoustic engineer, I just, well, and somebody explained to me how, how that was actually gonna be usable. What do we, what do we plan on doing with this audio? Is this more mostly for monitoring the, how the school bus driver reacts to, you know, to a situation? Because past the fourth of the fifth seat, you're not gonna hear anything but a whole bunch of noise, quite frankly. I, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, what's the genesis for it?
It, it depends, Mr. Wolf. I, I don't know. I mean, you're asking a return on investment, and I don't know that there is one that's satisfactory.
Looking at the problem we're trying to solve.
What is, yeah, what is the genesis of it?
The...
Genesis is a change in the law now. It was never permitted before. The state legislature just recently enacted, uh, legislation which allows school districts to, to audio tape. It was a violation of the Wire Pack Act. Now it's not. But you do have to adopt a policy, and you also have to provide, uh, appropriate notices.
Right.
Regarding the fact that you will be audio, audio taping as well as videotaping, uh, on school buses. We were always allowed to videotape. We were not allowed to audio tape.
Is there a problem, I, I guess getting back to Mr. Wolf's thing, is there a problem that we've had where an audio tape would have made some sort of significant difference? Or is this something that the transportation companies desperately want? I mean, like, what's the...
I, I believe it's something that the transportation companies do want. Desperate, I'm not sure. Um, I know that when I would review bus tape, it would be helpful to have heard the children, um, for simple things, uh, just to, just to kind of get a, a feel for how loud the bus is, because that would be one of the complaints. Um, you know, it's just a general ride. There, they were, you know, it, it looked as if they were very loud, but I couldn't tell. Um, and to be able to get back on that bus and, you know, just kind of reiterate what the bus driver's saying, which is very difficult as they're driving. So, um, I, I'm not sure. I haven't had that conversation with the bus company as far as what they really want to be able to manage with the audio.
Yeah, I think if you're listening for the bus driver giving instructions and the kid's not paying attention, or screaming and yelling in the bus, or, yeah, you'll, you'll be able to get that kind of information. That's really gonna be the extent. But...
Well, it, it actually, it, it could help the bus companies. In this, in this litigious country that we live in, uh, bus drivers are often accused of, of, uh, sexual harassment, racial abuse, and, and those type of things where the audio recording would help offset some of that, help defend the driver, or incriminate the driver if the driver, driver is at fault. I mean, I think that's why the bus companies want it, for self-protection.
This, this device right here, if you look at any of the recent bus incidents, no less than two or three students at any time taking a photo, video of the kid beating up other kids. Why they sit there and watch, of course. But, I mean, they, you know, that, that was being recorded, uh, because they were standing right, right there, a lot of beating was going on. Uh, that's just, just because we could...
Well, to be a policy presented to the board, the board can take action upon presentation of the policy. Or not.
No, I, if the bus company wants it for, you know, for general, I think, I think that's fine. But if you're looking for a conversation that's happening in trying to approve something that was said or named that was called, you're just not gonna get it, unless you're sitting in the front of the bus, or unless you're not gonna get that, that kind of audio call.
I agree. Were you finished?
I'm finished.
Okay.
Sorry if we did a lot.
The next item under new business, I, I don't know if this has been done before, but, but I wanted to do a little recap of the year, since this is the, the last meeting of this school year. And, and as we close out this school year, I wanted to do, I wanted to remind the board members as well as the public, we do not meet in July, and the next board meeting is not scheduled until Monday, August eleventh. So I didn't want anybody showing up finding the doors locked. I, I wanted to say, this board started out a little rough, and I guess that's a kind word, with so many new members and everybody learning how to work together. I mean, we seeded four new members in December, and within two months had to replace three of the nine members that we had. So it, it took a little while to learn to work together. Uh, several months ago, one of the local papers headlined, and the board did a lot of discussing and made very few decisions. And, and that was a point that I think was fairly accurate at the time. Mr. Kurtz didn't want to hear the recap, apparently. Uh, but I believe that this board, well, not agreeing on everything rightfully, because we shouldn't be agreeing on everything. We all have, have to weigh every item that comes up. I think we've developed a good working relationship, and in conjunction with the administration, we've made progress. And I just wanted to list some of the highlights. Uh, we started the calendar year with a budget deficit of three point six million dollars, and just passed the final budget with no deficit, no tax increase, no program cuts, and, and a, a fairly healthy reserve fund for this year. We approved the superintendent's realignment plan. We funded a facilities reserve study. After much debate, we approved the purchase of boilers for BEC, and we approved housing the administrative offices in the former APC. Something that was, something that was not widely publicized is that we expanded the high school curriculum to enhance education. We added several courses that we believe students will want to attend. And we endorsed the superintendent's before and after-school YMCA program. So they were all positive things. Plus, we had a, a domino effect of vacancies, starting with, with Dr. Otto announcing his retirement last year. But in, in six months, we have filled the, actually, in the past couple of months, we filled the superintendent's position, the director, director of curriculum and instruction, which replaces the former assistant to the superintendent position, the business manager, the assistant business manager, the director of technology, and assistant high school principal by reassignment, the Amity Elementary Center principal by reassignment, uh, the Berksboro Elementary Center assistant principal, and the band director. So as of right now, I don't believe we have any administrative vacancies, do we?
Not as of today.
So, wow, to go back, we started out rough.
That's a little, it's not very promising.
Still need to find some help for Ken.
Yeah, that's something. But we started out rough, and I, I think, having said that, I, I think we've actually come together. And I think going forward, I, I wanna say, Mrs. Torsia has selected several people that, that I think she has a good staff, and I think working together with this administration, I see nothing but good things for the school district. That's my recap. Any comments, questions, criticisms?
Can we jump over forty to Mr. Martino?
I said, is there any policy, transportation, or old business?
Okay.
Under due diligence, Mr. Martino, I think I have, uh, one thing, which I do apologize, I forgot to mention to you, to you guys, uh, I did speak briefly with, with Mr. Basil. So, uh, sorry for throwing you in the bus, Mr. Basil. Oh, actually, I'm on the bus. Uh, this year, I have to go over as the Burks EIT president. Um, and with Mr. Basil there before, they had started a discussion on merging with, uh, TCC. Uh, so the tax collection agency between the townships, municipalities, and then, uh, you know, Burks EIT, which owns the, uh, school districts. Um, and quite frankly, I now can make it on this, you know, secondhand basis. But this listener's also a Foxconn child, uh, I learned, I learned well. Uh, but I believe there's a, a meeting that they're gonna have in July coming up. Uh, I think our board is probably gonna be asked to vote on that merger coming August. Um, and, uh, maybe Mr. Basil can ask, I'm not sure, but frankly, it seems like this is an item that is gonna happen either, uh, this is gonna happen. But the school districts are actually the ones that, uh, established the EIT in essence. So if you want to have to approve any kind of merger, that's what occurred with TCC and Burks EIT. Am I making any sense of all?
Yeah, I mean, I, just to sort of recap, what I was saying, the Burks EIT is, was assembled, I think, by the eighteen school districts within Burks County to collect taxes on our behalf. And they do an excellent job. I think they collect like ninety-eight cents on every dollar, um, and at very, very minimal cost to the school district. So it's very, very efficient. And, um, it was a model in which the state of Pennsylvania then took a look and said, well, we ought to be doing this countywide. And we ought to be doing it for all the school districts and all the municipalities, uh, within a particular county. And so they formed this TCC. And interestingly, um, when I was on the Burks EIT, the TCC then was, uh, it was, it was being dominated by, um, a couple of the school districts that worked previously in the Burks EIT, that had, or, uh, had since come into the TCC. And there was a big discussion about whether or not they wouldn't even use Burks EIT for tax collection services anymore. They were gonna solicit other bids from other vendors. And quite frankly, if all the school districts moved away, then the Burks EIT would dissolve. And our fear was, you're then stuck with another vendor, and if you weren't happy with that vendor, it's not like you could easily go back and, and, and put, put Humpty, Humpty back together again. I mean, it would have been gone for good. And so the Burks EIT may have disappeared forever. Um, thankfully, we, we, you know, we, we addressed it as we would any other thing, and we ran it as a business, and said, we're gonna bid for the job, and, and, and the job was awarded to Burks EIT, and now the merger's moving forward. I think, I mean, I haven't sat on the Burks EIT in a while, but the concern at the time of the membership was, we didn't want the overall TCC to dilute or change the mission of Burks EIT.
Right, and the, the agreement, which, um, they, they kind of put out there, but it's, um, it looks like the, the school districts still kind of have more of a majority, uh, presence than we, than the municipalities. From what I understand, the municipalities don't even have time to show up to these TCCs.
They, they don't get much of a vote percentage-wise.
Yeah, it's a percentage.
The, the school districts so far outweigh in the way to vote that it's like...
We struggled sometimes just to get a quorum, you know, when we were there. And you, you, they were calling, uh, people from, like, "Yolobert, please come to the meeting, because you have, you have the eight percent that we need to get us over the, over the hump", you know?
Right. It, it was a difficult proposition, and I think the way the TC, I have to take a look at the way the structure is today, but back then, they had like an executive board of TC that was making all the decisions, and, and everybody else didn't really have as much of a voice. And I think that was the biggest concern. So, I mean, I'd be interested to see the, what the contract would be, and be able to review it. I didn't get a chance to, to go through in detail what you had sent over to me, but, um...
I think it's one of the questions was, uh, because there is a, uh, a value to, to Burks EIT. Um, and the, the question was then, uh, do, do we charge TCC a fee for taking over Burks EIT? And then since that fee would go back to the school districts, it would be, you know, an SSO EIT. So that was one of the questions, if we do that, or are we just kind of, one hand, or on the other hand, and...
Do you know, did they pursue, because one of the things I had argued for, and it looked like they were gonna pursue before my term ended, was, I had suggested that they ought to be diversifying themselves, and Burks EIT ought to be marketing that model and their services to other counties, be a competitor, just like any other accounting firm, and say, hey, look, you know, Lehigh's trying to do what we're doing, so, hey, we'll, we'll do Lehigh's tax collection as well, just in case they weren't selected by TCC. And so that they would have, it would be a business model going forward, the school district could...
I think they would pick up Reddick, but that was, uh, not, not outside of, uh, Reddick, Borde Town, or...
Reddick, Borde Town in Wilson, I think, was...
They have a big, big, yeah, they even put a, Burks EIT, you put a, an office out in Borde Town just to handle those folks that walk in.
Right. Because Borde Town was doing all their own tax collections as well as...
But when I was there, that's when they, that's when they were coming, that's when they came in, in class. But being Burks EIT, it's done a lot of phenomenal things, being thorough and efficient. That character recognition system that we got two years, they got two years ago, was something really beholden. You saw these tax forms flying through the computer, you know, you know, ten, every, you know, every, uh, couple of seconds. And it's just reading the characters of people writing. And it was spitting out things that were questionable, and it was doing all the calculations. It was really the biggest amount of time this week was allocated towards overtime, which, which was a large portion of the budget between February and April.
But it, it, in essence, it sounds like something that's going to happen, uh, but, uh, but we're gonna have to vote on that, so I don't want, you know, come on all these September, you know, billionaire guys, like, what, what, what? Uh, so I, I can get the proposal out there, buddy, and, uh, so you can take a look at that.
Yeah, when it comes out, it was just, if you would specify any impact that we're gonna have for our work on.
I, I don't think there's any impact at all.
Okay. Anything else? Presentations by the public on any issues?
That's all right. That's the end of the show. Um, I actually wasn't supposed to speak tonight, however. Did want to go to Mr. Basil. I'm sorry. I'm a little confused. You speak of future enrollment as if it's positive, but for me to compensate our budget, um, that really confuses me.
I'm sorry, I can't hear what you're saying.
You speak, uh, in your man.
You speak of future declining enrollment as if it's a positive, that means compensating our budget. That really confuses me.
I'm sorry, I can't hear what you're saying.
You speak, you speak of the future possible decline in enrollment as if it's a good day, and that means a faster, that we lose two hundred more students, that it cools another building, and it's, it's very disheartening. I'd really like your take on how you see that as a positive to our.
Well, our budgets, or, I'm sorry, our enrollment's been declining for the last four and a half years.
Why not that is?
I think that's just due to birth rates and other things. So that's what we've, look, before we started taking a look at it, we were looking at just overall enrollment on a yearly basis. No one was taking a look at housing projections, no one was taking a look at birth rates, nobody was looking at any of the forecasters for a population growth. We were just sitting here and making decisions based on what was happening in the past, which was exponential growth. And as a result of that, we built buildings we didn't need, and we renovated buildings that we didn't need, and we spent fifty, sixty million dollars doing that, which has negative impact on our budget and a negative impact on taxes. And so now we sat down and after looking at it a little couple of years, and we said, well, what's going on here? We had a population boom, a bubble, that's often been referred to, and is actually bimodal in terms of distribution and population here in our school district. And that bubble started in the elementary years and it's moved through and it's now up into the high school. And so behind the bubble, you have a trough, and so you don't have the enrollment and the demand for buildings that we've had in the past. And so as a result of that, going forward, I'm just being realistic, I didn't say it was a positive thing or a negative thing, what I said was, enrollment, if it is declining, then we need to budget and plan for declining enrollment. And that's why we had Tim Seldridge in here, independent of me or anything else, he did his own analysis, and he put those projections out there and we published them on the website for the entire community to review and, and take a look at it. People can challenge those assumptions, they can challenge the birth rate statistics, they can challenge any of that information that they want to challenge, but housing starts are down, birth rates are down, and the projections we have going forward indicated declining enrollment going forward. So based on a declining enrollment, I'm just sitting here trying to do an analysis and say, well, if we're going to see a declining enrollment, then we're going to have less need for capacity, physical capacity going forward. So if that's the case, why am I going to spend those precious dollars that we absolutely positively need in keeping a building open, okay, that would be better used for paying for curriculum and program and other things that are more important to our students? So I'd much rather have dollars that are being spent on utility bills for a building that we don't need, okay, going towards a music program. All right? So that's the way I look at it as a positive thing. I don't want to be spending money on things that, that we don't need. I'd rather take those dollars, because they are precious, and spend them on the things that are most important to us.
I think that it all helps every year when you're back there, major programs are being threatened to cut, and maybe people will want to move here as sort of a mass test as it's happening, too, because of this publicity and the things that every year are critical. I'll be back here in August and September, if there was anything for next year, it's cyclical, and thank you for that. Mr. Martino, I need to address your comment, just because I can't let you go without it. Particularly consulting not just to teachers in this district, but to me, who would trust my children, two local teachers in this district, that you would suspect that you obviously have no intention of very compensating them in the future because of their status well. You can't actually expect people to continue to work over raises, freeze their salaries, and increase class sizes and responsibilities without expecting a backlash. It's, the conversation that you spoke about increasing is because healthcare costs increase, it's not because they're paying more than cost, it's actually less than cost. And as far as salaries, this is one of the lowest areas, the average salary is fifty-five thousand, and they could make more than that as a manager of Walmart.
Well, it's not true. Seeing no other public comments, there are a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Meeting adjourned.